Living in my car instead of living in the day. But a wind blew down from Canada this morning like a warning shot of cold across my bow. So now I'm out here in my sandals, getting bloodied by these brambles, eating all the berries I'm allowed because it's blackberry time. Blackberry time. It's a secret of a season in its prime. When all the world is full and ripe and quickly going by, then it's blackberry, 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 blackberry time. And the air is full of cricket song and hayseed, honeybee and dragonfly. The last full day of summer baked and cooling on the window sill smells a lot like apple pie. And up beneath the poplar and the birches at the border where the grass has gone to trees, I've got those stains upon my fingers and an aftertaste that lingers, one part sweet, one part fruit and two parts seed. Blackberry time. Blackberry time. It's a secret of a season in its prime. When all the world is full and ripe and quickly going by, then it's blackberry, 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 blackberry time. And I wish I had a cup to fill to take this harvest home and to make it stay. And I wish I had that recipe to press it into wine and seal the flavor of the day. Watching from Silver Maple's branches is a catbird who sings a hungry kind of song. And he says be thankful for the sweet because you know that it don't keep. You just eat what you can eat and then you move along. When it's blackberry time. Blackberry time. It's a secret of a season in its prime. When all the world is full and ripe and quickly going by, then it's blackberry, blackberry, blackberry.
Meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen today is March 15th, 2021. Soon to Governor Baker's COVID-19 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws, general laws, chapter 38, section 18, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37, Verizon, FiOS and livestream at wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 890-6488-9712, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order they entered the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. Just a reminder, there are no votes except for to open and close the meeting tonight, but all of those votes will be roll call in alphabetical order. I do want to thank John O'Neill of the town's IT department and our friends at WCTV who are broadcasting this meeting live and will make it available on their website for future viewing as well. We will move into roll call, Selectman Bendel.
Present.
Selectman Kyra.
Present.
Selectman DePalma.
Present.
And Selectman Omahoney.
Here.
And I am here as well. All members being present, I would ask that those that are able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no transmitting of the Treasury warrant and there are no minutes to approve of tonight, so we will move into our one and only appointment, which is with the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Glenn Brand, regarding an overview of the town's application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority or MSBA, including the state of the current elementary schooling, the town's facilities master plan, the school system's facility needs, the MSBA application and the next steps in the process of building within the MSBA. Good evening, Dr. Brand. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eaton and members of the Board of Selectmen. Privilege to be here with you this evening is on behalf of the school system, but also obviously in concert with the town and Mr. Hall as town manager. We've been trying to bring focus to this opportunity that's really before the community of Wilmington right now as it relates to the Mass School Building Authority. As members no doubt know, in the presentation that's been delivered twice in the last week or so, first starting with the school committee and then the finance committee and obviously this evening with the Board of Selectmen. So it's been recommended that because of the fact that members of the committee have seen this presentation previously that we modify it. And so that is what we've done tonight and eliminated a number of the slides that were originally part of the presentation. That full presentation will still be made available though to the public for those members of the community that may wish to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Brand. Who notified you to modify this presentation? Because not everybody in the public may have seen the presentation. I don't understand why it's modified.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra, for that question. So it was recommended through a couple of conversations, including with the town manager, the Chair of the School Committee, as well as understand conversations with the Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I prefer that the full presentation be given tonight, or we'll just wait until another time you can do that.
Mr. Kyra, what's going to happen here tonight is Dr. Brand is going to present. This is certainly a evolving process. There will be time for questions and comments after he's through, but we're going to let Dr. Brand present to us and certainly any questions, comments, we'll be able to do that after he's concluded.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, but I'm here to see a full presentation as well as the public, not a half one. So I think we should see the full presentation. I didn't realize that you and the Chairman of the School Committee and the Town Manager made an executive decision to cut this presentation down.
I trust that.
I wish, I wish you had, I wish you had informed us of this.
Mr. Kyra, informing you would have violated open meeting law. And second.
If you informed me personally, it would have violated the open meeting law.
If I informed, you said us, which is plural. So if I informed.
Well, if you informed me and then informed Mr. Bendel and Ms. Omahoney and Mr. DePalma individually, it would not have violated the open meeting law.
Yes, it would have. It absolutely would have. So Dr. Brand, please proceed.
So we're not seeing the full presentation, is that correct? So the community that's watching tonight, that did not watch the school committee and did not watch the finance committee, but wanted to watch tonight, is not going to have the privilege or the opportunity to see a full presentation, is that correct, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kyra, I'm confused as to where your objection really lies. This is going to be a full presentation. I don't think that this is going to be.
But that's not what I just heard the Superintendent say. Is that, is that not correct, Mr. Brand?
That is correct. I have a modified slide pack that doesn't include the same content, but not in its entirety from that presentation that was previously delivered to the school committee and the.
Yeah, I don't think that's acceptable to the community. I think it's unfair. So what do we do?
Dr. Brand, you can proceed as you planned for tonight.
Just to clarify, if I may, because I'm happy to proceed with whichever presentation is reading yourself as a chair and the Board of Selectmen would prefer.
I prefer the full presentation.
Dr. Brand, I think that you can proceed as you planned for tonight. I think certainly this is not at all hiding anything. You've given this presentation now to the finance committee as well.
I object to that comment, Mr. Chair. I'm not saying that he's hiding anything.
I apologize by mischaracterizing your comment, Mr. Kyra.
That's not an appropriate thing to say, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kyra, then what is, what are you accusing the, I guess myself?
I'm not accusing, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, Mr. Chairman. I'm saying that the community has a right to see the full presentation. What makes you think that everybody in the community watched the first two presentations?
Never made that allegation, Mr. Kyra.
You absolutely did. And if you didn't, Mr. Brand said so.
Mr. Kyra, I think we should give Dr. Brand the benefit of being able to present to us the pertinent information.
I don't think that you should make that decision for us, Mr. Chair. That was a mistake on your part.
All right, well, then I guess we're going to live with it now. So, Dr. Brand.
Unfortunately, yes, I guess we are.
Well, if I may, I'll begin and I'm happy to, if there is a specific information beyond the slide pack that I plan to show you this evening, I'm happy to also reference the wider presentation as well. So the purpose of really all of these presentations has been very focused on providing an update to the community of Wilmington. And I say that deliberately, not just the school department or the constituents that we serve directly as our parent guardians, but the wider Wilmington community.
Mr. Brand, I don't, I just want to ask a question. Do we have a copy of the slide presentation you're providing us tonight or will we receive that or just the full one from before?
Yes, most certainly, Mr. Kyra, thank you. And forgive me for not saying at the outset, you don't write this moment, but I'm more than happy to send both slide packs off to Mr. Hall to then share with the Board of Selectmen.
You're presenting us that we don't even have. So when we received our packet on Friday, we don't even have the accurate slide presentation that you're providing us. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just jump in here for a second? So let me be clear, there was no effort to be, to try to derail this process. There were two presentations that were made last week, one to the school committee, one to the finance committee, both which are in the WCTV archives and can be reviewed by the public if they're so inclined. The intent was really, it was based upon a conversation that I initially had with the Chair out of concern that this presentation had been done twice, both presentations were identical. And the sense that I had was that some members of the board had already seen the presentation and rather than making the identical presentation, the third presentation, the thought was to condense it to some measure and really try to focus on what is at the heart of the matter, which is looking at the options that the town simply has no interest in pursuing. And so rather than going through the full identical presentation as was made on, to the school committee and to the finance committee, that was the thought. There was no intent to be underhanded or to usurp anybody's authority. It was just an attempt to try to focus on what was important.
So, so Mr. Hall, in order for me to see the full presentation, I should go and take a look at the finance committee meeting or the school committee meeting, is that correct? Because I'm not going to get it tonight.
Well, I think you'll get by and large what was presented before, but clearly you will not.
The answer is no.
Mr. Kyra, you actually have the presentation that was provided to the school committee and the finance committee because that was in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton, I understand that, but I don't have the presentation that we're going to be receiving tonight.
And neither do I, and we're going to give the Superintendent of Schools the opportunity. I trust that the Superintendent of Schools is going to be able to present us with the status of our MSBA's application. I don't think that that's something that is out of the realm of his capability. And I imagine that the information that is going to be in his presentation is very much derived and not including new information from the fact that we already have. Mr. Kyra, you're going to let me finish here.
We received, we received a packet that was not accurate then, is that correct?
Mr. Kyra. That's not correct. You received a packet of information that was comprehensive in nature and the information that will be provided tonight is the very same information with some slides that were not, that were in the prior presentation that will not be in the slide pack tonight. But there is, there is no basis to suggest that there's any inaccuracies in this presentation that were not reflective in the prior presentation, other than the fact that instead of 52 slides in the prior slide pack, there's something in the order of 11 slides in this slide pack.
I think, I think if you want community support, you should have shown the full presentation instead of just deciding upon yourselves to make this decision. Because not everybody in this community had the opportunity to watch the school committee meeting or the finance committee meeting, but they certainly may have had the opportunity to watch this meeting. But go ahead and do what you have to do.
Mr. Eaton, should I proceed?
Please.
So what has remained central to these presentations, as I was saying, is the central purpose of trying to ensure that the community of Wilmington as a whole has clarity around this opportunity before it, as it appears with the Massachusetts School Building Authority or MSBA, the acronym that is used throughout the information that follows. Ultimately, what we are trying to do is to seek feedback on these options before us that we are in need of providing to the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, at the conclusion of this month, the month of March. Very briefly, a snapshot of the school buildings in Wilmington, as members of the Selectmen know, we currently operate eight school facilities that collectively house students from pre-K through grade 12. This slide shows the age of the facilities over, over the course of 1955 through until 2015, with the Wildwood School, as you can see, 1955, the oldest.
Are you, are you supposed to be showing us a slide right now? Because there's nothing on the.
Yeah, Mr. O'Neill, can you share Dr. Brand's presentation?
Mr. Dr. Brand is actually sharing his own.
I apologize. I apologize for that.
Yep.
All right, this was the slide that I was speaking to that you were not able to see, but the age of our eight school facilities in Wilmington, starting with the oldest Wildwood on the far left-hand side. The Beltwell was built in 61, North 62, Warburn Street 63, the West 64, Shoshine Elementary 1970. The Wilmington Middle School, 2000, is when that facility opened, as I understand it. And the Wilmington High School, the original high school, I'm told was built in 1950, the new high school built and opened in 2015. One of the, one of the things that becomes abundantly clear for, for communities such as ours in this sort of crossroads, if you will, is considerations of whether or not to go down the path of contemplating new construction and/or renovation in contrast to maintaining the current facilities as a whole. Thank you to Mr. Hooper, who has helped assemble this information here, but the really purpose here is to try and provide the community with a glimpse of some of the larger ticket items that have been identified over the next number of years, number of fiscal years for specifically the elementary schools. And those larger ticket items, not unlike perhaps your home, tend to include such things as roofs, boilers, windows. You can see the estimated dollars in current fiscal year, which is the middle column in the gray, and on the far right-hand side, the estimated cost in the specific target years with approximately a 3% increase from year to year for inflation. So as you can see, to maintain our current infrastructure and our current facilities, specifically at the elementary level, is just shy of about $10 million. And with the exception of some flooring replacements at a couple of the buildings, what this allocation of approximately $10 million does not do is change the interior of the facilities or modernize those buildings other than those systems in any other way. The original master plan that was completed in 2018, but as I understand, it started in 2015, was not a master plan that specifically just focused on the school facilities, but rather all of the public buildings in town. There was a specific proposal that emerged from that study and as it relates to the school facilities, and it identified school consolidation as a recommendation, as a remedy, if you will, to help improve the situation with our elementary schools, given that we have six schools of the age that they are. Part of the underlying rationale or reasons for, would emerge in that study for school consolidation included the first three, the reduction of overall operational costs, the idea of operating newer but fewer facilities tends to gain attention when you start to consider consolidation of school facilities. The minimization of school transitions was a second rationale or factor for reducing the total number of schools. It was noted in a number of occasions and certainly in my tenure here in the district. People are concerned about the total number of transitions from one building to another from the time in which a student enters the school system in pre-kindergarten or kindergarten through until the end of 12th grade. A third, a third factor to consider is the time to completion. And so just to pause on this a moment, obviously, one path could be to maintain, in our case, eight facilities, but in order to attend to all of those buildings over time, that would take some time and it would be overtime. And obviously leaving some facilities way down the pipeline for any improvements, the idea of time to completion is considered a benefit from consolidation. And lastly, what indeed is the case is that the Mass School Building Authority very much looks positively or favorably at a school community that's considering consolidation. And that's another factor in terms of the possibility of moving forward here. An update on where the application process, the status, if you will, of the work to date that's brought us here ultimately to this month. The, under the current regulations associated with the grant program and the MSBA grant program, the Superintendent of Schools is authorized to submit those statement of interests, as they're called, or SOIs. There are two necessary boards that are authorized to allow the Superintendent to submit those, and that included this, this, this board, as well as the school committee and the respective dates in which those votes, going back to the spring of last year, took place. We filed, just as a reminder, for members of the committee, we filed six statement of interest applications for all six elementary schools. And the Wildwood School was specifically designated as the primary project. We are told that MSBA received a pool of, not approximately, but exactly 71 core statements of interest. There are two grant programs, I'll just note with MSBA, one is called a core program, and that refers specifically to new building construction or renovation. The other grant program that MSBA offers is an accelerated repair program, and that's specifically for schools and communities that are looking to update the envelope of the building. This is a core program application and six we submitted. MSBA, we've learned since, recommended 30 SOIs to move forward in the process, and Wildwood was selected, the Wildwood School here in Wilmington was selected as one of 15 senior studies. I'll speak about senior study here in just a moment. Going back just for a few moments, back to January, the MSBA contacted the district and let us know that we were being advanced forward as part of the senior study. I should say that the timeline for MSBA, not unlike most everything else, has been adjusted because of, because of COVID-19. Typically, they would be making their recommendations and inviting prospective communities in in the fall, so usually late August, September. They are, they've necessarily adjusted their schedule and so it's not a typical year. We then had a senior study meeting with MSBA on February the 3rd of this year. What the senior study is, is really examining a number of different elements or factors for school community, enrollment, specific program or facilities issues at a school, and specifically in this case for the priority project, Wildwood. Normally, visits are conducted in person to, to schools that have applied. This year, things were modified in that, and so we did, we had a virtual meeting and we also submitted a video of the Wildwood facility. It is important to note that although we are engaged in the senior study process, it's not a, it's not an invitation at this juncture into the program, but it's part of the process. And you can see the following, that we're involved in that February 3rd conversation with MSBA around the Wildwood School. Here are the takeaways, if I could, to characterize them from the recent conversations with the MSBA. It is clear to us at this juncture that there are three things about Wilmington and our application. There is no question in their mind that we as a community, as a town, have considerable need for assistance, given that we have six schools that are the age that they are at the elementary level. It's also clear to the MSBA that school consolidation makes sense, given our situation, that is to say, our enrollment as a whole, coupled with how many buildings that we're operating right now, as well as the understanding that they have that consolidation was a remedy, a strategy, if you will, in the facilities master plan. The MSBA also knows that Wilmington is a really good partner, having just recently completed the Wilmington High School as a project with MSBA, that was a core project. But I think most importantly to point out and ultimately why we've tried to embark in this really rather limited window in gathering additional information, and it's clear to Mr. Hall and. Mr. Rogirio and Mr. Hooper and myself, along with the respective chairs, that MSBA also realizes that if we're going to go down the path of consolidation, there's lots of options that could be considered or could be studied. But when MSBA considers a partner for a project that might involve consolidation, they have to limit the scope. They can't study everything and every possibility. And so they've really pushed upon us to say, from the readiness standpoint, they think that we're ready for the above bullets outlined on the slide, but they are looking for additional information. And specifically, as it relates to consolidation, they are looking for which options we, as a community, don't seem to have any interest in studying. Reimbursement with MSBA is certainly a very significant thing for school communities who are considering tackling the costs associated with new construction and/or renovation. It's certainly the case that school communities and towns do not need MSBA funding in order to embark upon a school building project. But it certainly is a significant amount of funding that's available. It is the only grant program in the state to offset costs associated with new school construction and/or renovation. The left-hand side of the slide highlights the dollars that were associated with Wilmington High School as an example. The total cost of that school project was approximately $82 million. The cost to the town of Wilmington was $44 million or thereabouts. These are round figures, of course. The MSBA grant was $37 million, and that was based upon an effective reimbursement rate of 45%. So as a varying example or different example, if a school project was, say, $50 million using those same factors that were just modeled with the high school, the approximate cost to Wilmington would be in the neighborhood of $28 million with a grant of around $22 million based still on that 45% reimbursement rate. So as has been mentioned, what we are in need of doing, if we hope to be seriously considered for the fiscal year 20 grant program, and we are, even though we're in 21, this is the fiscal year 20 grant program, because the window of applications opened up in fiscal year 20, that we were looking to provide them with additional information. After further consideration and feedback from some of the other committees that we presented to, we've reconsidered the original idea that was presented in terms of engaging the community through a survey process. Originally, that was thought to be perhaps a quick way to gather feedback, a sense of the community, if you will. Certainly not a binding decision by any means, but a sense of the community in terms of perhaps some possible consolidation options. And given the recommendations of the Wilmington master, facilities master plan has been, has been shared, we want to take that as a, as a starting point, an important one, and to convey to MSBA where the possible options might lie and the the options that we see as, as those that we'd love to have them study further with us, as well as those that just for a variety of reasons don't seem to make sense with where we're at with this juncture. And so, you know, after further considering this as a whole, seems like the options that just don't truly represent what would be a meaningful direction forward for the town of Wilmington would be, first off, just replacing the Wildwood as a standalone pre-K K facility. For if to do that would necessarily, at least for some time, require the continual operation of all of the other seven school facilities. It also doesn't seem prudent to consider an option that doesn't include pre-K. And I say that specifically because what we do know is the case is that Mass School Building Authority will help support building costs for pre-K programs when you have them and you're looking to keep them in a school facility. But they won't support the construction or renovation for a standalone pre-K facility. So imagine, if you will, bringing the Beltwell and Wildwood pre-K grade levels together. Any kind of building to house them would not be covered. Those costs would not be supported by them. And back to the notion of the consolidation as the direction that came out of the facilities master plan, it does not seem, it does not seem prudent to maintaining the current number of elementary buildings, but again, forging towards consolidation. So the options that seem based upon all of that to be reasonable ones to signal to MSBA to help us study if we are invited into the program could be something along the lines of a pre-K through third grade option for the north side of town or pre-K through five option for the north side of town as well, too, as we, as we thought about that further. So the next steps in terms of where we find ourselves, the, we are, by all accounts, seriously being considered as a possible town and community that perhaps MSBA considers inviting into their 2020 grant program. And if that happens, of course, what would be important is to ensure the engagement of permanent building committee in Wilmington to help to help shepherd this work in this project. There is no question, and I think it's really important to point out to the community that if we are fortunate to be invited in, this is only the beginning of public outreach that must occur in terms of providing insight in terms of the various options that would be studied and that may emerge as the best choice, the best option for Wilmington. Certainly, there will be the need to obtain comments from all of the respective leadership boards in town, and of course, the public. None of these projects, none of these projects can go forward with MSBA grant program without the full support of the community. And I just, certainly the community went, went to that place with the high school, and that would be certainly the case for any prospective project. And if the, if the town's not invited in to the 2020 grant program, which is always a reality, the number of districts and communities who are looking to get into the program always far exceeds the number that can be actually invited in. There is the opportunity to reapply in 2021, and we're understanding that that grant program will open up shortly. Not sure when, but actually quite soon. And a final, by no means a footnote, but certainly not last or least, but at the heart of this all continues again to be the concern around the Wildwood School. And the town is in the process, we understand it, of putting together an RFP to assist the district, the school committee, and the town in studying the short-term options for the students, the staff, and the program of the school. So with that, I'm very happy to take any questions that members of the committee may have, and by all means, if I may, this, although I delivered this presentation, I just wanted to pause and extend great thanks for the partnership for Mr. Hall, Mr. Hooper, Mr. Rogirio, Mr. Perry. This is a collective effort. This is by no means the superintendent's sole presentation. This has to be a partnership, and I thank them for their work in helping put this together.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brandon. And board members certainly will, will go down the line. I did want to just kind of back up a step and provide a little bit of context as to where exactly we are as well as how we got here. So as Dr. Brand mentioned, 2018, we did complete a facilities master plan that did encompass both the municipal and the school buildings in town. At that time, the school portion of that plan was endorsed by the school committee. The six elementary schools that we have were all built between the mid-'50s and 1970. And children that are entering into the Wilmington school system will go to one school for pre-K and kindergarten, another school for first, second, and third grade, and another school for fourth and fifth grade. And since the days of Joey and Benton, we've been told that this is too many transitions for elementary school children, that the town should work to consolidate the grades in its elementary schools. As Dr. Brand did touch upon, there are benefits to the MSBA in that they provide somewhere in the ballpark of 40% subsidized, subsidy for the construction or renovation of school projects. They are by no means a passive partner or passing funding agency. They are definitely, they have their seat at the table, and they very much are involved in the planning process. But they are unique in that none of the other needs that the town has in terms of capital building projects have a similar funding mechanism to the MSBA. So the 40% give or take that the MSBA would be funding for any school project in the future, there is no such counterpart for a senior center or an North Wilmington substation or a town hall or a library or the like. This is unique to school construction. You will recall that back in October 2019, we did have a facilities master plan meeting in front of the Board of Selectmen that included the school committee as well as the finance committee. On about a month later, on November 25th, 2019, this board met with Dr. Brand at that time. Dr. Brand reported that he and other members in town and school leadership had met with Lee Door of Doran Whittier. Doran Whittier had been involved in the high school building project. And he's been involved in several other communities for their own MSBA projects. And he had advised that the town could submit one SOI or statement of intent for the Wildwood School, but if that one was accepted, the town would be restricted to the rehabilitation or construction at that Wildwood School site. Because consolidation of grades was something that was given serious consideration, the recommendation was to prepare statements of interest or SOIs for multiple schools to provide the flexibility to provide for that grade consolidation. Again, at that November 25th, 2019 meeting, the Board of Selectmen did agree with that approach, and we instructed the town manager to work with Dr. Brand to prepare six SOIs for each of the six elementary schools. And about five months later, on April 27th, 2020, Dr. Brand then met with us again and presented his, the six statements of interest or SOIs that he and the town manager had prepared, and all six voted on and agreed to be submitted by this Board of Selectmen as well. And Dr. Brand's presentation noted that those six SOIs were also agreed to and submitted to the MSBA by the school committee two days later. This, right now, this meeting is happening as we are still in the review process of the MSBA of those SOIs that have been submitted through that process. The cycle has been enlarged quite a bit because of delays relating to the pandemic. So while their decision would have likely already been made a long time ago, had last year been a normal year, they are now still making their final decisions for this cycle. We had an initial conversation with the MSBA in the fall of last year. We had a follow-up discussion a little bit over a month ago, in which we were informed that we were in the top 30 submissions of the cycle. During the course of that conversation, representatives at the MSBA made the request that, as we chose the path which provided the most flexibility in submitting six SOIs, that the town provides some guidance as what the town does not want to do, so as to narrow the spectrum of possibilities to the extent that we could. Understand that we're not being asked at this point to provide a specific grade configuration. We're not being asked to provide a specific site for construction, and we're not being asked to provide for specific sequencing of all elementary schools at this point. Rather, they are asking if there is a general consensus on what the town does not want. For example, do we want or do we not want one elementary school for all elementary school students, which would be approximately 1,500 kids? Do we want or do we not want rehabilitating all six elementary schools to continue operations with their current configuration? While defining what we're wanting a negative by what we don't want seems like an odd ask, it would follow that the purpose of this exercise and the purpose of tonight's meeting would be to get feedback from board members on what they do not want, so that the MSBA can figure out about how much they would be investing in the next Wilmington school project. One elementary school for 1,500 children would be a lot more expensive than an addition or end renovation of an existing elementary school. And it is probably safe to assume how expensive this project would be is a significant consideration to the MSBA. Just by way of example, down the street in Billerica, the new Billerica Memorial High School has approximately 1,500 students and costs about $160 million. Again, I'm going to open it up to other members, and we'll just go down the line, but just to start off, and I'll be the first one to walk off the ledge, I suppose. I'm comfortable that I'm saying, in saying that I am not interested in having one elementary school for all 1,500 elementary school students, as that does seem cost prohibitive and would compromise our ability to address our other municipal capital needs. And on the other end of the spectrum, I am not interested in rehabilitating all six elementary schools with the current configuration in hopes that we can eliminate one of the two transitions that our elementary school students have before getting to middle school. So, Dr. Brandon, am I correct in, is that a fair assessment, I guess, of the ask that the MSBA has made of us to eliminate the possibilities so as to provide a slightly narrower approach to evaluating the submission that they are still in the process of evaluating?
Mr. Chair, just a clarification before Mr. Brand speaks. I didn't even hear him mention the option of a one school for 1,500. That wasn't even something that, that he presented. So why is that being brought up?
Mr. Cairo, the purpose of this exercise, which I'm in the middle of confirming with Dr. Brand, is to eliminate what we don't want, which he did specify.
Because tonight, I saw at least five or six new slides that was not in the packet and that was not presented in fairness to the school committee or to the finance committee. Was this information publicized to the public? Was this, was this communication online to the public before tonight's meeting?
I don't believe so, Mr. Cairo.
No, okay. So that, that wasn't even done. And I'm trying to follow along with this old packet that I have, and it's not even close to what Mr. Brand has, is in this packet as to what he said. And you want us tonight to see this for the first time and discuss this. This is just not fair. Not, not fair at all, that, that we're seeing a different presentation than the last two boards. I didn't hear you mention about a school, one school of 1,500, Mr. Brand, did you tonight?
I did not tonight.
No, you did not. So I don't know how Mr. Eaton thought is bringing that up as something that we don't want. I don't, I don't get it.
And so, Dr. Brand, just to go back to, the purpose for tonight's exercise is really because the MSBA is currently evaluating our submissions. And they have asked us to eliminate things that we don't want, so that we can then communicate that to the MSBA, so that they can complete their review of our submission that we have that is still currently being evaluated. Is that correct?
On one of Mr. Brand's, Mr. Cairo, on one of Brand's new slides about information to convey to the MSBA, he mentioned that the community was involved in that. Was the community involved in that?
Mr. Cairo, we're going to go down the line, and you're going to get your opportunity.
No, I mean, I'm going to get my, I'm not commenting on anything because I didn't see anything that, that was in the last two presentations, Mr. Chairman, because of a decision you made. I mean, we didn't have the opportunity to see A through G. We didn't have an opportunity to see the revision one and the revision two, or even the slide that Mr. Brand skipped on the last two meetings on page 37, where he had educators take a survey to find out whether it was good to have transitions or not have transitions. So I, I don't know. This doesn't make sense to me. Okay.
Dr. Brand, just to be clear on what the MSBA has asked. They have asked us to let them know what we do not want to pursue, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Bentall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Dr. Brand. Thank you for being here. Members of the school committee, thank you as well. First of all, I just want to say that I think we can all agree that this is great news, that the MSBA has showed interest in wanting to work with Wilmington again. And certainly, this is a great opportunity for us that I hope that we won't miss out on this year. And certainly, another thing I think we can all agree on is if we are not lucky enough to move on to the next round of the MSBA, that I hope we can continue to work together in reapplying next year. But, but my hope is that it will be, will be accepted this year. And so to answer the question, Mr. Chairman, about my feedback for tonight and what we may not be interested in, I would just say that my feedback would be, based on what I know, having spoken to residents about this over the last couple of years, is that residents don't want to take on multi-project debt at one time. And I think that a lot of taxpayers would be hesitant to do so, given the fiscal uncertainty moving forward. I think that residents do, however, like the idea of rallying behind. I think that residents do, however, like the idea of rallying behind a new Wildwood School. And I personally am here to advocate for that. I know it was talked about extensively here tonight by Dr. Brand. And I think that we can build community consensus around solely focusing on the Wildwood. Now, I know that may not be popular train of thought here tonight, but I think it's important to remember that if we have an opportunity to push for this project, that it's in a great location in town, that there's a good-sized piece of property somewhere in the order of seven-plus acres, and that our public buildings superintendent has told us that in the last year or two, that he doesn't think it'll last more than five years. So there clearly is a sense of urgency for that. And although I have clearly been at the front of, with others in advocating for a North Wilmington substation, we don't have a grant program out there willing to work with us for a new substation. Therefore, I think we should really be advocating for a Wildwood. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate that I don't think that taxpayers want to take on six projects at this time. And that I think it would be fiscally irresponsible to do so, and that our sole focus should be on the Wildwood. With that, I'll yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Mr. Kyra? Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yep, you're good.
Yeah, I'll hold off for a minute or two. But you can move on and then I'll come in after.
All right. Mr. Obama?
Yes, first off, thank you, Dr. Brand and the school committee for making your presentation. I will agree with Mr. Bendel. The community is, does not want to incur the expenses of remodeling and putting additions on schools right now until we see what the fiscal climate is going to be. I do agree also with Mr. Bendel that we should be concentrating on the Wildwood. It's the school that's in the most deplorable condition. And for us to have our new students, our youngest of students, being brought into a building like that is deplorable and embarrassing. But I don't hold anybody to blame. It's just time for a new school at the Wildwood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Ms. Elmahoney?
Sure. So I don't think it's been any secret. I've probably been saying it since the time of Joanne Benton, that I don't believe, I think there have been too many transitions. And I think the infrastructure, having to support six schools, especially six older schools, hasn't made sense for a long time. So I support the consolidation plan. I think I can safely say, as Chairman Eaton said, that I would not support continuing to maintain the current plan of trying to renovate and have six older schools continue to work the way they've been working. And I also would not support consolidating K through five into one, you know, mall school. I do believe the answer is somewhere in the middle. I'm not sure how I feel about one consolidated pre-K to second, no, pre-K and K, or pre-K and then K to second and three to five. I think I would want to hear more from Dr. Brand and the school committee about the pros and cons. My concern, quite frankly, especially given this past year that we've been in, is the social component to our children. Right now, our children are kind of one side of town or the other side of town until sixth grade. And then they kind of get merged together. And thankfully, we have a lot of sports programs that allow them to meet kids from other sides of town. But my concern is if we continue, if we have them together, you know, when they're little, and then we separate them for first to fifth grade, and then we bring them back together in sixth grade, is that really the best way to have them kind of meeting their peer group or maintaining their peer group? And I don't know what the right or wrong answer is, because that's not my specialty. But I would suggest that we need to think through how the consolidation would work. I also think we really need to look at the schools and their locations while we're thoughtfully deciding which schools should be kind of the home base of the new schools. Because in, as Selectman, you know, Bendel stated, we've been trying to get a substation in this town for years. And we don't have a grant program for it. I think there's a compelling community need for it. And quite frankly, the North Intermediate School is a decent location for something like that. The Wildwood School is obviously a priority, given everything we've learned over these last few years especially. But I don't want to see us kind of throw the baby out with the bathwater and trying to get the Wildwood School done as soon as possible, and therefore locking ourselves into this continued structure of how the schools should be. So I support the consolidation plan. I would definitely want to have further conversation as to how that would look more specifically. And I think it needs to be a bigger conversation as to what's available, what would that would then make available to the town for the other needs. We've identified a lot of different needs in this town, and it's time for us to start addressing them. We can't continue to talk and plan. We need to actually start figuring out ways to accomplish them. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Elmahoney. Mr. Kyra?
Yeah. This was a different presentation, Mr. Brand, that you've given tonight, that we hadn't had the opportunity to see the seven, seven options that you provided the other boards for us to look at them and say, yeah, A, B, C is good. And I, you know, I listened to the school committee and they gave their comments and concerns. And some didn't want to go out twenty-four years, others wanted to do two schools. And I watched the finance committee meeting as well. And this was just totally different and just unfair to present it to us like this and for us not even to have it in front of us to go by, to write a note, to go back and look at it. Just unfair. I'm for a new, you know, we need a new elementary school. That's probably the best way to resolve this issue. We need a new elementary school. And whether it's at the Wildwood or the Glen Road or wherever it may be, I remember at the facilities master plan, they said that the Wildwood facility is the best spot for a school because that's the most centrally located place. I remember sitting in at one of those meetings where the Cecil Group made that comment. Although, you know, they talked about it not being a school that's going to last for another five or seven years. But they did say that that was a great location for a school. So I certainly would be in favor of a new Wildwood. And that would resolve a lot of problems right off the bat. Rather than having to go in and have to spend ninety-seven to one hundred million dollars in renovating four schools that the taxpayers probably won't support. I'll bet you they'll support a new Wildwood School though. But it all depends on how you present it and approach it. You know, you talk about transitions. And I think, is your philosophy to have less transitions or more transitions? What does it mean about transitions that are good or bad, Mr. Brand?
Well, of course, I was not here during the time that the facilities master plan work was undertaken. I came into the district just as that plan was wrapped up and completed. But reading the comments that were included in the, some of the narrative sections of that report, quite honestly, didn't really surprise me in the sense of understanding that from a couple of standpoints. The impact on students having to move to a new facility so frequently over their journey, right, through the time in the school system, as well as for families as well, that just as a family gets settled into one of the elementary schools, and I'm defining elementary as pre-K through five, you know, just as they get settled, it's time to move again. And that seems to have caught the attention and concern of families as a whole, which I think clearly points to the idea that to reduce the number of transitions as a whole is felt to be better for both students and families.
Okay, so you're someone who advocates for a reduction in the transitions. And sometimes transitions are good for kids, believe it or not. It all depends on how it's approached to a child. Some children may not respond to the teacher that they're with now, and then they move on to another school and another teacher and they excel. Just, you know, I kind of liken it because I like sports. And sometimes you have a wide receiver who does lousy for one team, but then gets traded from the Patriots to the Rams, and he's a hero because he did so well there. It works in reverse. I understand. It's the approach of how you present to a child in the transitions. But I did notice in your survey of educators that sixty percent, sixty-point-four percent of the educators in Wilmington do support transitions, which I was surprised, and twenty-six-point-one percent do not, which I was surprised. So in other words, they like transitions as opposed to not. So that was, that was an interesting survey that you had. You know, I, it's interesting, Mr. Howell, did you talk to the OPM for the senior center in the town hall about what's taking place with the schools? Have you had a conversation with P three?
Yes, I have.
Okay, that's good. And the reason why I bring that up is because town hall itself could play a pivotal location in this, if we decide to go with a new elementary school. And the reason why I say that is because town hall was a former school. So that, you know, instead of renting out modules that you proposed in the first slide presentation that was very expensive, if we build a new town hall, say, across the street from the existing one at the St. Dorothy's Palace of Land, then you're making the current town hall, which is a school, available so that if we decide to build a new Wildwood, the kids from the Wildwood, you said there were ten classes at the Wildwood, could easily, once the current town hall is retrofitted, could easily fit there for the time being while a new Wildwood is being built. But the only way to do that is to get the town hall built. And the only way to do that is to have P three understand all three components that are taking place here and to see which one should go first in order for things to move appropriately. So you have a, the town meeting back in June appropriated eighty million dollars for the superintendent to have a feasibility and planning study with the approval of the school committee. I'm sure the school committee would approve that study. We've done a ton of studies. I don't know why we had to spend more taxpayer dollars on another study. We all know we need a new school. But whatever the case may be, the town meeting voted to appropriate eighty million dollars. And I know that it was mentioned the other night of the finance committee.
Point of order, just eighty thousand, eighty thousand, not million.
What did I say? Million? I'm sorry. Eighty thousand dollars for a study. And I think it was posed to Mr. Howell, did he send out an RFP and do the work on that? But I don't know that that was his, I think that was in the purview of the school committee, so, in the superintendent. So you're planning to do another study to sort of drill down if we need a new school? Is that what I understood? You had a senior study meeting with a few people? And you're gonna go forward with this study?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, first of all, the senior study that I think, if I understand the question, that the chair, that the superintendent referenced was a conversation that was held with the MSBA about a month ago and is part of the process for their further review of the town's SOIs. So that senior study was intended for MSBA to get some further information about the town's current desire goals with respect to the SOIs. The eighty thousand dollars as being referred to was a recognition that the Wildwood School cannot remain in its current state indefinitely. And so, the intent was to try to identify what the most cost-effective options might be so that students and staff that would normally be in that school for the next five to ten years, does it make sense to make some modest changes to the building in terms of its heating system or other aspects of the building so that it's more comfortable to be in for the next five or ten years? If there's a, because even if we get accepted into the MSBA, as has been stated many times, it takes somewhere in the neighborhood of five to seven years before a new school can be dealt with or opened. So that study was strictly intended to look at what are our options? Should we put some limited money into that school? Should we add modular classrooms to make it more palatable? Or should we look at leasing space from a commercial establishment? Those, that was the intent.
Yeah, okay. So that hasn't been done yet.
That's right.
And Mr. Hooper said the other night that the Wildwood School could last for at least another five years. So we're gonna spend any thousand dollars to find out if that school will last another five years, or maybe ten. But we don't want to keep the kids there for another ten years. I don't think anybody wants to do that. And that's why I had suggested that, you know, if you build that, if you get ahold of P three and find out what priority is, then you open up a school for those kids to go into, and that would be the Glen Road. So the other night, if, at the, what was it, March eleventh? Maybe it was around ten-thirty or so. I don't know if you heard a big, huge bang, but it was me falling off my chair when Mr. Brand answered a question for Mary Ann Glezzo, when she asked, and I'm just paraphrasing, so are you presenting any of these options to the MSBA? And your answer, Mr. Brand, was no. So my follow-up question would have been, then what are we doing here? So, are you presenting options, options we don't want to the MSBA? Is that what your next move is?
I'll reiterate Chair Eaton's comments earlier this evening in that although it, although the ultimate question that the MSBA has signaled to us is necessary to provide for them, it's an overview of which options we do not want them to study should we be invited in. So those options, I'll just note, those options, Mr. Kyra, that your point, I know that you're referencing that were included in the full presentation that I understand is in your packet and that was provided to the other committees as well, was really just to try and provide a landscape view, if you will, of the various options that ultimately could exist out there for our school system, given where we're at. The time of completion that was included in those options was really specific to try and model the fact that if this community could only support new school construction and/or renovation through a partnership with the MSBA grant program, and that each project, because you can only do one project with MSBA at a time, they only allow you to do that, takes between five to seven years. Depending on the total number of building projects that would be necessary to attend to the school situation at the elementary level, that would be the corresponding years. So.
So they are, they, the MSBA is not looking for specific options that we've determined and that we want them to study. Rather, they want to know unequivocally which ones don't you want us to look at? Which ones do you not have any interest in? And the reason for that is because, and I think it was mentioned earlier this evening, they want to focus their resources, their time, and that of the communities. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, they want these projects to succeed. And inevitably, if invited in through the aid of a consultant, there's, there could be a number of options that could emerge that can then be demonstrated or displayed, shared with the school, the community of Wilmington as a whole, with the pros and cons and costs and so on, and ultimately leading to the citizenry of Wilmington to have to decide. And I think that that, if I may, is an important thing to stress, is that even if we are invited in, there's not one singular option that will lead to a new facility. And most importantly, the citizens of Wilmington will have a very important vote or say in whichever project is going to move forward.
So the other night, when it was asked to you about presenting the options we don't want, which would, which would lead us to the options we do want. So if we had four options that we wanted and someone said, what if a fifth option? If we have five options, what if all of a sudden a sixth option becomes available to us? Can we go with that? And the answer from you was that you weren't sure. And the answer from Mr. Howell was you weren't sure. But now tonight, you're telling us that that can happen? Because the other night, you weren't sure. But now tonight, another option can come from this?
There, if there is a partnership with MSBA and they work with the community, the context within which they're working could force, or necessitate, rather, the development of a certain option or options based upon a variety of factors. For example, I have worked in a community and I've seen this unfold where there was a strong desire to have a certain building with a certain grade level configuration. But based upon the enrollment that would be in that school and the number of staff, et cetera, the total space, literally, physical space on a campus that would be deemed to be appropriate for traffic and everything else was not possible or was not doable because the town did not have a big enough parcel of land to accommodate that particular option. So that led to the construction, not literally, the development, I'm sorry, of a different option or options. So there is not one preset number of options that MSBA is looking for here. Again, it's rather which grade level configurations, which grade level designs do we not want them to look further with Wilmington?
I noticed that one of the slides indicated that we do not want a new school. Is that, I mean, I would prefer a new school. But so is that what you would be presenting to the MSBA that the community does not want a new school?
Mr. Kyer, I'm not sure specifically what you're referencing.
It was a slide that you had on tonight. I don't have a copy of that slide presentation because I wasn't given one beforehand. But there was one of the slides that showed a breakdown of what we prefer or not prefer to have.
I think it might be Slide 10.
So options, so options we do not want to study is a standalone Wildwood. So we're not looking to put a new Wildwood Elementary School, which would be done in a shorter period of time and resolve a major problem because then you would have a brand-new elementary school. And then down the road, you could look at rehabbing the other schools. As Mr. Roggerio said, sort of like over at the North, you could keep the bones and fix the insides. I think something like that, he said, paraphrasing him. But there's this here, this option, you're not allowing for the community to have a brand-new elementary school, right? Because it says that do not want to study that. Now, this, I think, is where you said you had community involvement. And did you send out the survey yet, by the way? Has that gone out to the community?
It has not gone out to the community. And as I think I mentioned earlier this evening, after further discussion with Mr. Howell and Mr. Hooper, Mr. Roggerio, we just, and based upon the feedback that we'd received, we have received rather previously, it's thought that perhaps at this time, the survey option may not be the best way to go, given the complexity of this topic and the information that surrounds it and the extremely limited timeline that we have.
And the feedback, the feedback you received from who?
The previous two committees.
Okay. So the previous two committees, that's what you're going with? No, no brand-new elementary school because of the feedback you got back from the two committees and not any feedback from the community? I mean, I was on this committee called the Yentile Recreational Facility, and we had about 10 public meetings for the community to get involved in. Since you started this project of the SOIs back in April of 2020, how many public meetings have you had? I understand we've had the pandemic and that certainly put a crimp on having in-person meetings. But we had public meetings like for the EPA regarding the Oleen site. EPA had a public hearing and we had a member of residents attend that. So have you had any public meetings with the residents to see what they want?
We have not. But from our understanding with MSBA, that's not totally out of the norm. That, most importantly, to stress again, if I may, that if invited in to the process, what is only to come are public meetings that will develop over time and allow for the community's engagement at a much, much higher level in a much more comprehensive way that can help press towards the option that seems best for Wilmington. So this is really at the very, very beginning stages of this process.
So explain to me what you need from the Board of Selectmen, from us? Are you looking for us to give you a vote on these particular options we don't want? Are you looking for us to give you a vote on the options we do want? Is the MSBA looking for the governmental units to support the decisions of Mr. Brand, Mr. Howell, Mr. Hooper, and Mr. Roggerio? What's the next steps?
Yeah, no, they're not. It's a great question. And they are not looking for action or a vote specifically from leadership boards. In our particular case here, what we would like to be able to report back to them is without question that the interest is there for pursuit of consolidation. That's first up. You know, you mentioned, Mr. Kyer, a couple of times around the Wildwood, and that's a desire that you'd like to see. And I'll just underscore the fact that that remains the target here for our application. It is the priority project. And I appreciate the views that many have shared this evening. There is no question that that building needs attention. But any potential project that emerges here will have to include the Wildwood as part of any building that is to come to fruition. And whether that be a pre-K through K or whether that be a pre-K through some additional grade level, the Wilmington School will have to be a part of it out of the very necessity of this application process. So I think that that's an important thing to stress here.
In my own personal options, I would be in favor of a new elementary school, particularly at the Wildwood. And then I look at the Shawsheen, Woburn Street, North and West as you could make it all pre-K to five so that there are no transitions at all and you have neighborhood schools, you have five of them. And then we're decommissioning or repurposing the Beltwell maybe to a recreational, for the recreation department or maybe even the senior center. Or you could, if you like transitions, you could have pre-K to three at the Wildwood, Shawsheen, and Woburn Street and four to five remaining at the North and the West. I know that in version number two, which you didn't show tonight, but you showed it the other two, and Ms. Megan Ellie brought up the fact that the Woburn Street goes to pre-K to three and the Shawsheen goes to pre-K to three. And that resolves a problem too in that scenario, which we weren't able to see and discuss tonight. And then you keep your North and West as grades four and five. And with the construction of a new Wildwood, that's the main concern, that's the possibility right there. And then once that's constructed and you decide whether you want to go pre-K to three and four to five or all pre-K to five if you don't believe in transitions, then you look at the other schools and you take the oldest, the next oldest one for rehab. You have the Glen Road available to be used to bring kids in from another school while you're rehabbing it or if there's room over the new elementary school. So there's a lot of that planning that needs to be done and that's what P3 should be involved in as well. So your next step to keep this ball rolling is to write a letter to the MSBA? And what is in the letter that you're going to present to them?
So we have not gotten to that point yet. But we, I don't know that they're necessarily looking for anything in writing, but they probably will have an interest in that. I will say that the MSBA knows that we are having these outreach meetings to the town leadership boards. So they are aware of the fact that we are within a relatively short window of time trying to do our best collectively between the town hall and the school department to gather feedback. It's certainly a constrained timeline and such, but nevertheless, to try and provide them with a little more insight in terms of some of the things that we've heard for the feedbacks such as this evening around, again, the essence of or the importance of consolidation, that we're on the right track as it relates to Wilmington as the priority project. And lastly, but certainly not least, is where does the feedback that we've received in rather a limited scope, to be sure, pointing to in terms of options that there may not be an interest in in pursuing and having them not study should we be invited in?
So when does the letter go to the MSBA? Or how do you notify? You said it may not be a letter. What, do you get a phone call or Zoom meeting?
We actually have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow. They just reached out today, in fact. Sorry, not tomorrow, I apologize. Wednesday of this week. And so again, Chair Eaton, Chair of the School Committee, Ms. Bryson, Mr. Roggerio, Mr. Hooper, Mr. Howell and myself will be having a follow-up conversation with them to try and find out what, if anything more or further, they're looking to have before the end of this month, as we understand it. And they are in need of making final decisions around communities to invite in.
So are you, will you be presenting consolidation and not a new school? Is that your intent?
So it seems clear to me, but I'm one voice of this, and I just will point that out in terms of the interest, the receptivity, if you will, to consolidation. You know, and that goes back my view, and it seems like that of others, to the facilities master plan, that maybe there's not one definitive grade level configuration. But certainly, it would be prudent to include pre-K and K, the Wildwood, as part of that potential project and then go from there.
I have no idea what that. Okay, because there are a few people on this call that want a new elementary school. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyer. I want to give Mr. Howell the opportunity to chime in as well.
Well, certainly, one of the things that I think it's fair that was learned this evening is that several members of the board seem to be more inclined to, as I understand it, and certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, but replace the Wildwood School perhaps in its current configuration without any change in grade level. And that's, if that's my understanding, then that would be perhaps counter to the idea of consolidation. So I think, and again, that's what my understanding is.
Mr. Howell, excuse me for interrupting. You made mention that without changing grade level. That's not what I said. I'm in favor of a new elementary school at the Wildwood and it could be a pre-K to three or it could be a pre-K to five. That's what I said. I didn't say that it would stay the same.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hooper?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Just wanted to give you the opportunity to weigh in as well, Mr. Perry. I'll give you an opportunity next and then we'll.
Well, as you see, there's been a lot of work and a lot of effort put into this and we still have some time to go. I know P3 is putting some information together and we're looking to have something, I guess, within the next week or so. Of course, whatever it takes, whatever the town decides, we will continue to maintain the school and keep it functioning as long as we see fit until we come up with something. So there is a lot of discussion that has to go on here. There's a lot of information that came out of the facility master plan. I agree with the, you know, the concern for the taxpayer, being one of them myself, and also for the consolidation of the school.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Mr. Perry, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, far be it for me to chime in on the feasibility and the, I guess, conditions of the building more so. But just from a financial standpoint is there are certainly numerous ramifications in trying to figure out a long-term cohesive plan in solving the needs of the school buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I wanted to give Mr. Roggerio as well as members of the school committee the opportunity to chime in, just as a point of order. It is an exception to the open meeting law that attends by a quorum of a public body at a meeting of another public body that has complied with notice requirements of the open meeting law is an exception to the definition of meeting within Chapter 38, Section 18, so long as the visiting members communicate only by open participation in the meeting and do not deliberate. So I do want to offer Mr. Roggerio, who's the Assistant Superintendent of Administration and Finance, as well as Ms. Burns, Mr. Aggsdale, Mr. Faly and Mrs. Samaha, the opportunity to chime in if they want as well. Dr. Bryson did reach out to me earlier and say that she had a work commitment that prohibited her attendance tonight. Mr. Roggerio or members of the school committee, feel free to chime in if you so wish.
I'll just say that again, I thank you for listening and participating in this this meeting. There's a lot of good information in the air and, you know. It's our way for the MSBA, if we were invited in, in normal times, we would have been in already. They just wanted additional information to help our application. That's all we're trying to do. Because whatever happens, once we get in. Because whatever happens, once we get invited in, then I think everything's on the table at that point. So, but again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruggiero.
Chair.
Mr. DePaola?
Yeah, I apologize. When I was discussing the Wildwood being rebuilt, I was I was hoping that it would be built as an elementary school also. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePaola. Mr. Bendel?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Through you, if I could ask Mr. Perry a question. The question was raised the other night about the the debt being retired on the high school, I think, in twenty thirty-seven. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. But there's also and I won't put you on the spot for every single number and date, but there are others, including Yentao, that we are still waiting to retire. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, we have on the books about thirty-three point six million for the high school project. When you include the interest, and that is on the books through FY twenty thirty-seven. We have as a whole, I can get you a total figure too. We have through FY twenty thirty-seven, still the latest we have for any debt, which is exclusively the high school project. We have about forty point seven million in debt service owed through that point in time for the town.
Thank you very much. And I know that's kind of somber to hear that, but it is a reality for all of us. And so it's hard to ignore that when we combine that with all the other needs that we have in town, which include, you know, a lot of the things that were mentioned here tonight and 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 Wednesday and Thursday of last week. So I I really appreciate some of the commentary, and I I also appreciated the commentary of the finance committee the other night and the school committee, and and there's been a lot of good conversation. I just want to make sure that I emphasize that we have a number of other needs, and we have to be mindful of people's wallets.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. I saw your hand go up, Ms. Burns.
Thank you very much. There's a couple of things I wanted to clarify. I've had the opportunity to review, go back in history and look at what led us to the high school. And there's a couple of things that Joe and Benton did speak about, and there's a couple of things that I was a part of these conversations when I first got onto the board. These transitions are not just the transitions of convenience. These transitions impact the education of our students from school to school. And that was one of the things that Mrs. Benton had spoken to, is the student impact and learning and scores that she saw with these transitions. These buildings are not just municipal buildings to us. These buildings are learning centers. They're a part of the tools that our educators teach with and are essential. And in looking at the building, these buildings, and I, as a taxpayer, can absolutely understand the ramifications of taking on more debt. But the schools are the backbone, where the with town halls, the brain. Our children, our families and our residents are the heart and soul of this community. Without the support of those schools, the inability to be able to support both our jobs as as educating our kids and thriving impacts so much. It's, you know, we're still striving for a twenty-first century education for our kids and aging buildings. And I have to say, and it can't be stated enough, that George Hooper and his crew have been tremendous in in especially in the Wildwood piece, in in making that building function. But it's it's not it it impacts the whole of education. It's, you know, I understand the debt, and I'm going to, as it was stated by the former town manager back ten years ago at the special town meeting. It is going to be, it is difficult. It is looking at new taxes and and absolutely and unequivocally, I am grateful for people to be mindful of that. But what my fear is, especially especially to the impact of how education continues to evolve, and what our schools are supposed and our educators are supposed to meet in aging buildings, and I know we're not
Maybe just me, but Ms. Burns is certainly cut out in these two ways. I'm seeing some nods, so I might not be the only one, but.
It's really educationally driven. Thank you.
All right, I think we I think we got the point. You did cut out for for a little bit, Ms. Burns, but I think we got the gist of what you were saying. I just wanted to give the opportunity of the school committee members to chime in if they so chose. Certainly no obligation, but. Mr. Ragsdale?
Yeah, I'd briefly like to just mention that the, you know, the the town and school department team that has been working all along on the MSBA project, really on the front end and now on the back end, were put in a pretty tough position, because when we were originally approaching MSBA because of the focus on Wildwood, and then from their encouragement, decided, no, we should submit all six schools. That enabled, I mean, that that engendered a huge amount of work to get those enormous applications together and get them all in in time for the April first deadline. Because which we weren't originally expecting to submit so many schools. And here on the end side, right when we're expecting to hear very shortly, they suddenly asked, no, we need more information, but there's a very short window of time in which to possibly collect this. And there's simply the the circumstances of this being kind of, you know, get throwing us a curveball at the end and being so tight in the in the beginning, that I think it's worth acknowledging that the people working on this, and, you know, I won't mention them again, but, you know, as a as a real cross-school department and town team have really been putting in a lot of effort and time to make this happen. And hopefully, fingers crossed, we will give the MSB what they are looking for, MSBA what they are looking for, and be invited into the program. And then we really can start to work and study the options that we have in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. All right, seeing no other comments, Dr. Brandon, I believe you have commentary from the board, so. That being said, we will go now to communications, which there are none. And then public comment. Mr. O'Neill, do we have any members of the public on the line?
Mr. Chair, we currently do not.
All right, I'll leave it open for a minute. If you wish to make public comment, you may do so by dialing one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Meeting ID is eight nine zero six four eight eight nine seven one two. You'll have to press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. And then raise a virtual hand by pressing star nine. Mr. O'Neill, do we have anybody who's called in?
Still no callers, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. O'Neill, I will move on from public comments. We'll go to announcements.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Call.
Just before you do that, and I apologize for not trying jumping in on this earlier, but I I do want to, if I could, just go back to the the question that was raised earlier about this, under the options that are listed in the current presentation, replacing the Wildwoods as a standalone pre-K K. Just for our purposes of trying to be make sure we're understanding the situation here. My, again, my understanding from the earlier comments that were made was that at least three members of the Board of Selectmen are are interested in the prospect of replacing the Wildwood School in its, I guess, in its current location. But as as Mr. Selectman Kyra clarified, perhaps as a pre-K to three or pre-K to five. But going back to this option that has been listed here as a potential option not to consider is of the members that were that are interested in perhaps a replacement of the Wildwood. Is there any opinion as to whether it should be simply a replacement of the Wildwood as a pre-K and K, so essentially a new building with the existing grade configuration? Is that, is it fair to say that that is is not something that the board would be or members of the board would be interested in, or would you have caution about taking that off the table?
We can go down the line here, Mr. Hall. So I I will say that that seems to be aligned with having six separate projects. So I I would be opposed to replacing it with the current configuration, and I would be in favor of a standalone school there that had an enlarged grade configuration, or grade consolidation. So what grades are there, I think, I I'm certainly open to to consideration, but just building a a brand-new pre-K and K there, I think we would be having six projects that would be very expensive and very long to complete. And we'll just go down the line, just so we have some direction. Mr. Bendel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I I think I purposely avoided that earlier, because I don't think I have a clear answer to that question, but I want to, I'm open to all configurations. I think whatever makes sense. I just hope to get off the starting block here with a new new Wildwood at that location. And certainly, we're open to any and all configuration that makes sense for our kids.
Mr. Kyra, I think Mr. Hall had framed yours, but certainly want you to have the opportunity to put it in your own words.
Yeah, no, I I'm in favor of a new Wildwood School, whether it pre-K to three, pre-K to two, a pre-K to five. We need to address the problem, and the problem is the Wildwood. And we need a new school there. And we would be consolidating, we would be eliminating the Beltwell, so we'd be going from six schools to five. But that's that's my feeling.
Mr. DePaola? You're muted, Mr. DePaola.
Sorry about that. I agree with Mr. Bendel and Mr. Kyra. I'd like to see the Wildwood replaced, whether it's K through five, K through four. That's something that can we can continue on with this discussion with at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. DePaola. Ms. Omahaoni?
I I agree with with you, Chairman Eaton. I think clearly the Wildwood needs to be the priority, but it needs to be part of a larger class size than it currently is, a larger grade size. And again, I don't, like Mr. Kyra said, I don't know if that looks like pre-K to two to three to five. But I I think it needs to be the beginning of the larger plan to to do the this consolidation. I don't support maintaining six separate elementary schools with the divisions the way that they have been. I think it's time that we we start consolidating them for it to make more sense for the infrastructure as well as for the the academics around it.
All right, so we will double back to announcements. Any board members with, Mr. Bendel?
If I could just, not before announcements, if I could through you request through Dr. Brand, if if you could please send us tonight's presentation as well, that'd be much appreciated. And I trust that you have already planned to make both these documents public on the website, so I I don't want to assume anything, but I would
Absolutely, I I will send this right after this meeting to Mr. Hall, and yes, both documents will be public.
Thank you very much.
Any announcements? Seeing none, we'll go to new business. Seeing none, Mr. Hall, will you walk us through important dates?
Actually, you may have to do that, Mr. Chair, as I don't have it. Okay, here we go. Finance Committee tomorrow evening is the public public hearing to review the budget, review zoning articles, seven PM. March eighteenth is the Finance Committee meeting, where they will decide on their recommendations, virtual seven PM. March twenty-second is an export of selectmen's meeting, seven PM. Brush drop-offs on April third, Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. April fifth is the last day to register to vote at the annual town election. Town meeting, Town Clerk's Office is going to be open from eight thirty AM until eight PM. April seventh is another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Followed by
Sorry about that.
Brush drop-off again, Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. On the tenth, the twelfth is another selectmen's meeting, nine, Room nine, hopefully, seven PM. April fourteenth is a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Again, on the seventeenth, Old Main Street, brush drop-off, nine AM to four PM. Town offices are closed on April nineteenth for the Patriots Day holiday and in honor of the IT Director's birthday, apparently. And brush drop-off on April twenty-first, Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM.
That's excellent, Mr. O'Neill. Thank you for that inclusion.
And then we continue on. April twenty-fourth is an Old Main Street, another brush drop-off, nine AM to four PM. Town elections on the twenty-fourth. Polls open at eight AM and close at eight PM. Board of Selectmen's meeting on the twenty-sixth, seven PM. Again, we're expecting to be in person in Room nine, town annual town meeting, May first, nine AM, Shriners Auditorium, ninety-nine, Fordham Road.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Tonight's salute to services, Carl Guarino. He's a long, he was a longtime Wilmington resident. He's a US Marine Corporal in the Vietnam War. He served from September twenty-three, nineteen sixty-six till September eighteenth, nineteen sixty-eight. A member of the US Marine Corps' first battalion. Received the Vietnam Service in Campaign Medals for National Defense. Agent Orange during the war. And he sadly passed away on January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Thank you for your service and rest in peace, sir. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni?
Yes.
And I'm a S as well. Good night, everyone.